Good morning. My name's Chris Kias. I am chairman of the administration committee and I like to call this meeting, the special meeting to order on Wednesday, April 20th, 2022 at 11:02 a.m. We have a roll call, please.
Martin.
President.
Berman.
Berman's here.
Davis. Board. Ross.
Ross here.
Gums. Pierog. Shepro. Kias.
Microphone off.
Kias present. Looks like we have a quorum. Just barely. Oh, plenty. Okay, great. Uh, we will dispense from the, from reading the minutes, proving the minutes from April 13th, 2022.
Actually, a special meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
This one is a special meeting. You feel special, Mr. Shepro?
No, I just, I didn't say that on the.
Oh. Okay. Is there any public comment, anyone in, in person or online? We have nothing submitted, so. None of that. And then we move to the main event here, our facilities management. Uh, we'll have executive director Roger Fonstock with his report.
Okay. Thank you again, Roger Fonstock. Today we'll be talking about the last few weeks of review of building management and where we're at with that. And we have some recommendations as well. So Blair, if you could get the presentation on there, I'll, I'll kind of walk through this and feel free to stop and ask questions. I think, you know, this was a topic for the regular scheduled meeting for admin, but because of the length of the meeting and the importance of this, we asked Mr. Chairman if you'd have a special meeting for us to give this some attention. As you all know, um, we, you know, I've been serving as the interim executive director of the building management for the past three or four weeks. And in that time, I was asked to basically do some review of where things stand and what's, uh, you know, needed to be done. I will say that we spent a lot of time in the last few weeks catching up on, you know, invoices and contracts and, and things that needed to be, um, finished or, or addressed, uh, in the office. And I think we're, we're catching up. We're doing pretty good in that regard. If you hear of anything or you, somebody brings something up, I would appreciate if you bring it up to me. I do not know everything about, uh, the department yet and wouldn't, uh, claim to know everything, but we're starting to learn quite a bit about how things do or don't work. So, so today we're going to talk about organization and staffing. We're going to talk about finances and their, their capital program. Some of the challenges that they face with maintenance, uh, and also with, uh, again with staffing and hiring challenges. And then some recommendations that we're going to walk through. And then, um, how they handle certain requests that are not in their 2022 program. And I'm going to try to go through how, how the quote capital program, uh, was working or, or, and then how we think it should be working. And then we have a, a last, uh, the demolition, demolition of some buildings that were consideration, um, in the budget. And then finally closing out with some general things about safety, ADA, mailroom, janitorial and, and landscape and grounds. So those are kind of grouped together. I think those are the important, but maybe the lesser of the issues that, that building management is facing. I also think that it's important, you know, to determine, um, in this interim capacity versus long-term, you know, be thinking about what we're doing right now in the interim versus long-term where this will, will take us. We've kind of put this together without having a predetermined path for the short-term, long-term. So if you're, if you're concerned about, you know, where this takes us in a year or two years, feel free to ask. I'm, we're trying to figure out what we think would be just best for the overall program, regardless of who's, uh, in charge. So when you look at the current organization, um, this is the org chart that was submitted with their, their budget for 2022. And you have the executive director still at the top. Christopher Allen is, is out on leave. You have, um, to the left, you have the director of, of building management. And that's kind of the, the point for all of building maintenance and all of the services that people are looking for within, um, the building management department. And you'll see the breakout of judicial center campus. And then it kind of shifts over to building management. And as you look through there, if you see the titles, you'll see maintenance, building engineer, um, and vacant maintenance. So vacant shows up quite a bit in this one alone. You'll see, uh, seven different ones. And then there's an eighth one that I just heard is going to be vacant, um, at the end of this week. So out of what was 31 employees to start the year, they transferred six of the employees to the sheriff's office in the maintenance transfer, which left us with 25. And there's a mix of those were in the sheriff's office and the, uh, building management department. So we're looking at roughly 25 people in building management. And I believe three of them are vacancies right now, possibly four, depending on how you count the, the numbers. But anyway, the, the original budget for, uh, personnel, it, this is salary and wages. This doesn't have the, uh, uh, benefits associated with it, but it's 1.3 million for the current 31 employees. And again, they, they removed some employees from that this year. This is, uh, a budget performance report. I think this was done on, on, uh, April 7th, the date for this. And what you'll see is that in there, you can see that we're under spending at roughly 33% of the year. Four months gone by, uh, we've only spent 28%. So we're actually underspending, which is indicative of the fact that we don't hire all the people. So we're not overspending on salaries. And some of that's related to the fact that it's hard to find candidates at the salaries or rates that we pay, hard to find qualified candidates. Um, and then we also have people that, that leave for other positions. The most recent, uh, person leaving is taking a job in the sheriff's office. And they're going to probably make an additional $10,000 to $15,000 to move over. So, and, and we're happy for them. I think it was a good move for them. You know, when you move on to contractual and consulting, and we're going to talk about some of this in, in a minute, you know, again, you're at, you know, 33% of the year is done and you're at 27%. So overall, you know, it doesn't sound too bad when you consider all the maintenance budgets for all of the buildings combined. You're, you're still within that, uh, projected amount of money that you budgeted. Uh, commodities, same type of story. You're at 25% and you're 33% of the year. So, you know, if you're looking at it holistically, it doesn't look too bad. When you go back to this contractual though, and you start looking at individual line items in here, certain line items will pop out, you know, like, uh, repairs, you know, and some of the different repair line items for grounds and buildings, um, are, are looking like they're, they're pretty high. And as you go through and look at capital, probably one of the, the good things for the 22 capital is that none of the capital money has been exercised. I mean, you have, at this point, 4.9 million in capital for your projects and you had budgeted 5.5 million. There's probably been a few, um, payments since the time of this report in the last week or so. But I would say you're still in that 4.5 plus million. And we'll talk about what was budgeted in that. And I, I describe this as the program. Okay. So when you talk about capital program, it's what's in this budget and what the board approved to pay for. Anything that wasn't in that list and wasn't in the capital budget to pay for is outside of the program. And then there's this question of how does it get put into the program? How does it get initiated? How does it get started? Where does, you know, where does that come from? Because ultimately I think some of the, the problems with capital is, you know, we start the year with kind of a, uh, the, the approved program and then things come along and get introduced. So what's the formal process of getting it into the program? Because the program itself is covered by the architect, engineering and construction manager at risk contracts that we have. But if it's not in the program, you probably shouldn't be having the, those people working on things that aren't in the program. And I think that's kind of a gap that we need to address and we'll talk about that a little bit. So we talked about maintenance budget, the challenges. These are the challenge areas, and I think that it's important to recognize that most of these, um, are the, kind of the big three, right? You have the, the government center here. You know, 44, 45% on buildings and grounds. You have judicial center repairs, you know, roads, buildings and equipment, um, are really running high for the juvenile justice center, right? We did a lot of work over there in the last three months. A lot of expenses still coming in. The sheriff's facility, which I would point out is now under, the maintenance staff is under the sheriff, but the O and M, the budget for these repairs is still under building management. But that was not moved. So we're paying bills for contractors to do repairs, but the on-staff, onsite maintenance people that are looking for the repairs are under the sheriff. Just, we're working on that with Sheriff Hane. What I told him was the best thing is that we be perfectly transparent about the amount of money in those budgets. Both sides should know, you know, how much money is available. Charles worked with them to set up the reports so that they have full knowledge of what's in all those line items that they're looking to spend out of. And we're going to be meeting with them to talk about, well, you're at, you know, uh, 50% now. If you're a third of the year done by the end of the year, if all things are consistent, you'll be at 150%. And, you know, it's, that sounds like a lot, 150%, but it's a $260,000 budget. So 150% projected to the year end is, is, is a six-figure number, but it's not a real, you know, outlandish number to reconcile. So the goal would be obviously to come back to this contractual table and keep this bottom line within range, that 27% for all buildings. You know, so you're, you're going to overspend in some, underspend in others at times. But the, you know, we won't be coming into finance to talk about money unless we get to where this 27% is way out of line. And we'll be looking at that every quarter. So mid-year, we'll look at it, we'll say we're at 27% right now at a third of the year. At half a year, are we at, you know, 70%, 80, 90? How far did we get in six months? And I, I think that's a good way of measuring it and we can bring that back to finance to talk about if we need a, a budget adjustment. Or, you know, a lot of times with regard to finance, if, if there's sufficient funds in the line items collectively to cover the expenses, we don't usually do a budget adjustment until you're out of line with your fund balance, basically. Um, and that's when you have large, larger concerns. But, so looking at that, we're, we're 27%, doesn't sound too terribly bad, but we have some really high maintenance averages for some of the buildings. I think that's indicative of the type of aging and depreciation of the, the different equipment, major mechanical repairs, um, that are being, being serviced in, in the buildings. Hopefully, you know, you don't have that hold true all year long. I mean, you just repaired them. So staffing and hiring, uh, challenges, you know, we have, uh, a, a issue challenge, hiring qualified staff. You have six vacancies. I think there's going to be a seventh, uh, right around the corner. You know, just, uh, speaking with staff, there's limited number of applicants. I think in the last month or so, they had three or four people apply. I don't believe, um, maybe, maybe one or two were even qualified to even interview. And I know that building ma, uh, building management's interviewed some of them. The average building management salary is up there. It's 50,972. The, uh, industry average for just a maintenance tech is 54. So it's, you know, $5,000 difference there, uh, fourth, or no, I'm sorry, uh, 3,000. Industry average for maintenance engineers is like $74,000, uh, which we have two people that are identified as, uh, maintenance engineers and their range is 65 to 75, um, in the, the org chart. But bringing on new staff is also, uh, difficult just because their, their workload. When you don't have enough people, you know, you, you say, oh, I'm going to, you know, indoctrinate and apprentice a new person to come in. Well, who's training or showing them how to do anything when everybody is, you know, scurrying and trying to just meet the day-to-day demands? So it's very difficult to start new staff, the workload, the training. There's no real good apprenticeship of people. You have hard time finding people and we pay probably moderately below average. And you're competing with school districts, cities and other big buildings, um, in the area. We see a lot of overtime. Overtime's increasing. So we get people that need, you know, support for the buildings that are open 24 hours a day. You can't address the demand, so you work the person an extra couple hours at night. The next day, you know, if, if that person is just worked overtime, you have another issue happen. They work again. I mean, at one time, I think we had a person in a two-week period report. I, I mean, it was, it was over 120 hours in two weeks. So that's a, that's a tremendous burden on, you know, overtime as well. So when you look at this, and this is based on, you know, our initial assessment of this is how, how do you kind of divide and conquer and organize what you do with, uh, building maintenance? And I'm going to talk about, um, three different ways that we're kind of contemplating this. So one is, you know, dividing the management and maintenance responsibilities. And if you go back to the first slide, I'll go all the way back. And you look at the first slide, which was dealing with this division of building management and having everything report up through a single individual. What we're looking at is how, how do you divide that up so that you have a face and people that are, um, you know, responsible for a manageable area? We have about a million square foot of buildings. There's about 30 buildings in a million square feet. So right now there's that funnel point for one person and all these people go back to it. So what, what I would look at is direction from the committee to basically put in place a person to be the director of maintenance for judicial and public safety for the JC campus. And then also have a director for the government center. Now there, there's people that are in places right now that are, you know, perhaps they would want to be in those positions or should be. But I think we look at, you know, hiring or, or promoting the people that we think are best to do the job. And we would basically be looking at, uh, dividing maintenance into those two, uh, segments. Each would get about a half a million square foot of space. The second, you know, part is, um, you know, internal candidates being encouraged. We, we certainly have some people that are very good at what they do. They have interest in, in, uh, you know, the management of the facilities. We would obviously encourage them, but I do think that we would give it, uh, you know, a good critical review. Is this, is this going to work for the county? And make some assessment about whether or not we, we think this can actually work, uh, with those individuals being in those roles. The second, you know, like splitting the square footage between the two positions and then, uh, staffing each of those people with a, a group of people to be, one, a, a more senior, uh, building engineer and then maintenance techs and custodial. And we also have, you know, a complement of contractors that work, uh, with them as well right now, doing maintenance of the, uh, major mechanicals. And that's something we're going to talk about as well. So that they handle the day-to-day kind of routine, uh, maintenance or, or what should be done in routine maintenance. And then they also call mechanical service companies to come in to do the more, uh, experienced, more, uh, sophisticated types of maintenance procedures that they can't, they can't do. So that's kind of the split of labor right now. Goes from inside to outside on contracts and they're doing the, the maintenance. So in this, in this scenario, we would have two directors, a, basically like a senior building, uh, maintenance engineer and then a group of maintenance technicians and custodial that would work on each side. The next part is.
We take a question on that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Um, and this occurred to me at, when you showed the slide.
Yes.
Of the, the ovals with the.
Yeah.
So my recollection is that when we voted to approve the transfer of the six employees.
Yes.
The sheriff made the point of this only is the personnel.
Yes.
It's not the commodities and so forth.
It's true.
And he said something like, that will come later. And so I'm wondering how does, when is later? And it always struck me, because my understanding is that legally, the sheriff is the custodian of the, the courthouse, whatever that means.
Yes.
And yet we have this sort of bifurcated.
Yeah.
In charge here is what maybe the way I would put it.
So.
Which I think you're sort of starting to address.
Yes.
And so I, I guess part of my question about all of this is that, how does this fit into the sheriff's either assumed responsibility or presumably he can agree, as I think has been the case for years about this?
So, so this is Roger again. So the, um, the way we're handling it right now in mid-budget cycle is that we're going to be perfectly transparent and work with the sheriff's team on all of the contractual items that affect them. And we're going to meet to, to, you know, discuss, hey, this is outside of our budget. You'll probably see us come into finance and say, hey, we've got a, a set of bills that are coming. We need a budget adjustment from contingency or from other funds to help pay the maintenance of this building. And you'll see a unified front from the sheriff and the building management to say, we realize we're at 110%, we're trending over. We would like to have consideration for maintaining the building and, and looking at, you know, like I said, I think the budget for, um, uh, sheriff maintenance of the buildings is about 260, something like that. And if we're at 150%, you're going to add another $130,000 to it by the end of the year. So that's the kind of numbers that we're seeing at a third of the year end. We're not over budget. We're at 27%, so we're not worried. I talked to, uh, the finance officer on Zick and told him where we're at. And he's like, yeah, he goes, there's no need to rush into finance to say, you know, declare, you know, you need money when you have only, uh, a third of the year done and you're at 27%. He's like, we're fine for now.
Some of that, Shepro, that, that's artificial in the sense of it's not because we're doing great economies it's because we can't fill positions that are budgeted.
It's, it's reactive. It's 100% reactive at this point. So yeah, if you, if you step on the accelerator and you start doing preventative and other types of maintenance, yeah, you're going to see that start to pick up speed. And I think that's, that's kind of the next evolution of this, which we'll, we'll also talk about.
Be talking about that.
Yeah, we're going to talk about how.
Answer your question.
This is kind of like, uh, the first option in, which is you need to staff it to get some basic level of functionality going for the requests and the scheduled maintenance and, and the preventative types of things. Then you have like the reactive maintenance. And we have this whole host of deferred things that haven't been done. So, so the second bullet point up there is something that, um, we've been struggling with the last three weeks. And the, the staff that are there, I think they do a, a great job. They're there to do accounts payable. They're doing the payroll. But I think that they need an office manager, someone to help coordinate procurement, RFP bids, contracts, and, and even the accounts payable, accounts receivable and payroll. And if you look at the accrual of time that has existed in building management, you'll quickly see that these people are in a position where they, they literally are so high demand, they can't take time off. They're struggling when somebody gets sick. Uh, we have a person out on FMLA right now, which is, is absolutely crippling some of the, uh, uh, office work. So, you know, working towards a, you know, a position for an office manager to coordinate procurement, RFPs and bids is critical. The procurement office, purchasing office, uh, Maria Calomia and Karen, they, they do a great job. But some of this stuff is trade-specific and the contracts are trade-specific. We have problems, um, you know, it, just interpreting some of the information from the contracts and translating it to the work. And I can give you an example of that. You know, when you look at the construction manager at risk, architect, engineering contracts, you know, it, it describes a pretty broad, uh, brush of things that they can do under those contracts. But then it says that it's what's in your program. So can they do anything that you ask them to do or does it need to be in the program? And I think that's what we're, we're looking at is it must be in that program. So when you do a, a bid for architect engineering and construction services, does it mean I can go build anything that is underneath the limit that was authorized? Or do I have to build something that's in the program that was approved by the board? And I, I think that's where we're at.
I think that was our understanding was when we approved something, that's what's.
Yeah.
To be built.
So some of the invoices that we're backtracking and some of the contracts is where does this originate? Where did it come from? How did this get started? And now we have these invoices. The work was obviously done. You're going to see a few of them at finance where work was done. There's invoices coming in and we're trying to figure out how do you, how do you correlate to the original agreements? You know, and I think some of that is under the, the board resolution at one point in time. You know, stipulated that these, uh, projects that were under construction with Cortigan could be completed. And then the contract itself is there, which says they can do architect engineering and construction management. So there's, there's, there's what the board intended and what's actually in the contract and what can be, uh, done. So we're just trying to align all of that, make sure that it's perfectly clear, make sure that we're following the intent and the contracts. Charles and I have been tracking down paperwork, Mark, track, track down paperwork for everything that's out there and making sure that all of them are supported by documentation and paid. And I think some of that is, you know, just the gap between, you know, where previous and current picked up. But I think an office manager would help tremendously and we would even be interested in proposing that as a shared position between IT and building management, because we do RFPs, bids, contracts as well. And it's a lot of work on our staff when we have a big, uh, contract going through as well. I think they would work in concert with the procurement office, with the, uh, Joe Onzick's team to make sure that we follow all the procurement code. Obviously the purchasing director would get the final approval on what we recommend. But I, I think it's, it's that big. I mean, it demands a lot of attention. We went out for a, uh, bid prior to me, uh, stepping into this role for, for plumbing services. There's no responses. So you saw an emergency purchase affidavit go through for plumbing services. Well, it wasn't for a lack of trying. It was put out to bid and we got no responses. You talked to some of the vendors and they're very busy. The contractors are very busy. They have lots of work. Some of the terms maybe for what we asked for in the bid are a little constraining because we have, you know, uh, requirements for them to meet. And a lot of them probably just determined that I have enough business. I don't need to respond to that. I can work through small, small commercial and residential and I'm happy to do that. So that, that's another area that we think is really important. And, uh, again, you know, we're, we're looking at, uh, splitting the, the responsibility of maintenance, but that position would have control over the contracts, RFPs, bids, managing the vendors. I think that's important as well. To not have a, have that relationship be solely with a maintenance worker deciding whether or not we execute a contract for tens of thousands of dollars. And, and not having to have, uh, um, you know, the, myself or somebody get involved in every, uh, purchase.
Question?
Uh, Mr. Shepro?
So is the duties that you are, have outlined, the job that should be being done by the office manager, is that currently part of somebody else's job description that's not being done because there's no time? Or is there really nobody whose job it is to do that?
So.
Or both, maybe?
I, I think it's a little bit of both, but I think the, the RFPs and bids have historically been done by procurement, which there's a little bit, it's no, I don't think it's their intent, but I think there's a disconnect between the building management needs and what our procurement office can functionally do with the staff they have. And so if it's augmenting what procurement does to get better results, that's one way of looking at it. But I think it's, it's specific enough to managing the contracts that it would be within building management or within our control. And then the role would be right now, the, I think it is shared between executive director and capital projects. They, they put the RFPs out with procurement and bring them back in, evaluate, recommend. Um, and certainly, you know, Mark Smith here, he, he works capital project. So capital projects that are in the program, Mark would take them out to bid with procurement to get the bids. But services that you use to fix, say, a boiler, right? Those are done, uh, through building management with procurement. I believe the executive director would play a role in that and they would evaluate the responses coming in. But I, I think you need more oversight to make sure that we're, you know, following the schedule, that we have people on contract for all the major trades to do these things. And loosely, you know, over the last few years, procurement, I think if you look at their schedule for renewing contracts, extending contracts, taking things out to bid, it, it is one of those things where things either barely get done or slip through and we're late. And you, you'll find that the contracts are not in place to get a plumber.
Well, my impression has always been, Shepro again, is that the procurement was like a ministerial function, right? You take something and say, here's, you know, put this out for whatever process is required. And you're not looking to them to say. Why are we doing this or should it be done or should be done differently, right? And so I, yeah, I.
I think a lot of times the, the requirements that go into the RFP or the bid are. Basically something that, that is, you know, done quickly to get it out and sometimes we need to have someone who has a little more experience. Doing the bids and RFPs crafting it and making sure we get responses uh for what we need, you know, it. We were talking about it this morning with a company, it does us no good to send out an RFP if nobody will respond to it. And, and that's kind of the, the process that you get. Are, are we send something out and we get one or two responses? So you don't, and, and you know, there's more than two plumbers in the whole county. I mean, so why aren't we getting um responses? And we talked about that with uh purchasing is, you know, what could we do to maybe um create an express type of bid process where we. Ask for very specific things and ask them to respond. Um, a good example would be if I said, you know, I, I want to put out a bid and all I want is I want all the plumbers that want to respond to give me their scheduled rates. And then I want parts, parts plus a percentage, that's all I want. I don't want anything else. So just very simple, tell me all your rate schedule and tell me your parts plus and we'll pick a. Uh, plumbing outfits that we would uh use. That seems very simple.
That would need to originate with the people who actually know.
Yes.
What the need is and not somebody in the procurement department.
Yes.
Who says this is our standard form.
And we have the same, same kinds of needs with IT. I, I, ours is less because I, I was talking with Charles about our, our projects tend to be single phase. We identify the needs for what we need to buy that year. We, we, we actually engineer and solve our problem, then we buy it and put it in. They'll do phase one engineering, design, architect, engineer, and then they go out to bid and then they implement and execute in a second. Uh, phase. So it's a little bit, a little bit more extended process. Um, and if you get into transportation, it's even more phases. Um, but that's, that's one of our areas that's kind of a pain point is the procurement, RFPs and bids. And I think that the finance and procurement would welcome the help because it is a lot of work. So in total, you know, there's three new positions.
Sorry, Mr. Martin?
Anecdotally, I, I.
I can't quite hear you, Mr. Martin.
I'm sorry, an- anecdotally. I, I, when I've looked at some of the contracts that we've entered into uh as a county, it seems as if. We use a generic form.
Yes.
Far beyond the generic forms app, applicability is part of what you're suggesting with the office manager, the idea of getting away from that. I mean, I've seen different. Totally different types of activity, construction contracts. Looking identical to uh, other contracts and it, and they're, they're all different. Beasts, uh, it, it.
I think this is Roger again. Ideally, if you're using. Your uh construction manager at risk, your architect engineering firms, they have their pay apps, they're very specific, they're standardized forms. I think a lot of times this position is a person who can reveal and check all the boxes. To make sure we have all the supporting documentation in place, the bid was done, the RP was done, put it all together in a package. Agree that it's complete and then process over to accounts payable, which is another area that we're looking at is. How do we, you know, depending on how you want to uh. Handle this over time, we have kind of built our own quasi. Business office to handle accounts payable and payroll, just like other offices and departments do. And it's because of the uniqueness and the amount of volume that we process for accounts payable. If IT is still involved in this, ideally, we would have the building management and IT. Accounts payable and payroll people all be the same group. And then if somebody takes off for a vacation or family leave, we're not in crisis mode. But if you say, I want to keep it separate and maintain, you know, a separate department and separate business office, then, you know, you're. Going to have to have people in place, more than one to do all of the accounts payable and payroll. It just, but our, our goal would be eventually that office manager would be responsible for procurement, RFPs, bids, contracts. And then the payroll and accounts payable, we already handle and we're actually uh Brooke from our office and Charles have been picking up a lot of the accounts payable. And processing it now with Michelle from uh building management, just to make sure that we get everything done the way we would do it. And, and I think that that's been helpful, but long-term, how do you, how do you see that, you know, working if it's, if it's a combined? Group of people doing it because of the, the, you know, functionality is better, backup, you know, scenario is better. You get kind of a consolidation of, of those two groups of people. I think that's where we would head if this is a long-term engagement. In the short term, if you, you know, have the current person. And we get the person back from FMLA and we look at this office manager shared position, I think you're in a lot stronger position. And maybe it's something we could even work out with, you know, the future where, where we have some shared. Knowledge between the two departments for backing each other up if, if the goal is to keep it separate.
Which would be a decision by the board.
Yes, at some time.
Mr. Sheprow.
I, as this is unfolding, I, I am reminded that I think. It has been a long time since our procurement or purchasing ordinance was written. And it strikes me that there. Should be some, for example, the streamlined process you've indicated. There are things that we could do, uh, but in many cases, institutionally, that needs to be brought. Up to.
You know.
Twenty-first century.
I would tell you that a lot of times too, when we look at uh contracts, existing contracts, we're looking at extensions of those existing contracts. Um, one, because inflation and costs are going up and if they'll extend at the current rates or marginally different, it's probably to our advantage. Two is, are we satisfied with them? Then why go through all the effort? But there, you know, you, you're not gonna, if you have those things in line, you're not going to go out to bid to create more work for yourself. If you have an extension, they're satisfactory, you know, but that's, that's also a, a critique as well is. You know, why aren't you taking all those out to bid again? Well, because it takes ninety days worth of work for somebody to follow it through the process. I think sometimes it's, you know, it's, it's oversimplified, but to take something from a, an idea to actually go through the procurement process is about ninety days. And then from the time we get done with that, we have the contracting phase, civil vetting with the state's attorney's office, signing. Getting counter signatures and then actually executing probably four to six months sometimes for some of these things. And then if you order stuff, it has lead time. I mean, it, it's not uncommon for the six-figure projects, they're, they're pushing six, six months.
Remember, Sheprow, again, I, this Drew probably remembers this. Where the, and this is a long time ago, was, is that somehow we ended up putting the insurance out. For a bid process that was like you were buying salt. When we were really trying to get services and that was just a total fiasco, as I remember.
There, there are differences between bids and like qualification-based selection. And transportation's kind of mastered that. I think they, they've got that down to a, a fine science. And there are times when we should be doing, you know, qualification-based uh reviews and not, not simply a, a bid, because. A, a, a lot of work that we'll do during the year um is urgent. But we don't know the defined requirements for what went wrong with a valve on a boiler. In the middle of the night, we just don't have the requirements for that. So we need a kind of a, a, a not to exceed limit for plumbing work. And we need to know the rates and the parts plus materials costs. And then we would build a statement of work. Somebody would approve of the work to be done, check the budget, reference the contract, approve of it. Execute it with, you know, the contractor and maintenance, very simple process and a lot of times. Um, I don't think that's being done, you know, so we get an invoice and it's, you know, where, where did this come from? Well, they approved it, somebody approved it. Okay, what's in the invoice? And a, a good example, you find an invoice that um, you know, is, is maybe. Twenty-seven thousand dollars and you know, you bought a boiler and you're trying to identify what capital asset did you buy? Because finance wants to know what capital was bought. So you go back and you say, I need a cut sheet, I need to know itemization of anything over five hundred dollars is a simple rule. It's under five hundred dollars, it's commodity, if it's over five hundred, I need itemization because I want a capital uh depreciation on it. Okay, and then I got labor. Those are just simple rules that this person would put in place. What rules do you need in order to buy something? Now, we have procurement office that sets up rules for the finance system, but in-office rules like that are, you know. Do you require a requisition to an order? Do you do the three quotes? Do you do the, you know, what process do you have for authorizing things? Um, right now in, you know, building management, my understanding of accounts payable is there's a single approver. And we're changing that so that we have. Approver. So in our office, contrary to everyone's uh. Other understanding, I can't buy anything without having Charles or Brooke or somebody approve of it. We don't have a single approver, everybody countersigns, Charles signs my time sheets, I sign his time sheets, same thing. Um, but it's just to have, make sure we have somebody else looking at everything. Um. You know, in, in looking at the positions, we define, you know, the director of maintenance position, the office manager, we believe that we're short. Um, a maintenance tech with the reorg. And then, you know, if you're looking at retaining these people and keeping them in place, I, I do think that you're somewhere in that ten percent marginally. Off on salary. So what does that look like in a fiscal year? It's about three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in a whole year. If you break it down to say you're going to do it for half the year, you're at two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, you know, and i- if you shared part of the position with IT, you might knock another thirty, forty thousand off of that. But you're, you're somewhere between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in wages and if you hired uh two or three people, another. Eighty, ninety thousand dollars in benefits type of thing. Um, and we're not proposing that you sign off on that today. What we're looking for is to buy into the concept and then we would bring back the actual resolutions. To, to say, we want to create this position, this position, and this is the amount of money. Um, based on the current budget and the underspending of personnel and, and, and wages. A, a good portion of that would be covered under the current budget even. And we could figure out the difference probably by the time we get ready for next administration committee. Um, and there'd be kind of a net difference to make the, the budget whole. So let's say you're somewhere between a hundred thousand and that number. To do what we're talking about, to try and set that up. That's the kind of staffing recommendation. So I put together this chart. And this is what we are looking at um in the packet, it's on page eleven. And you'll see that, that shows one point seven four instead of the one point three six, which was the current budget. And again, you're at half the year almost by the time we do this. But you'll see that the executive director position is still intact, that we didn't remove that. And then you'll see the two divisions of, of labor for the buildings. You know, custodial is, it, these are just simply on-staff daily type of cleanup crew for things, moving chairs. We actually have, you know, janitorial services through three contractors. Um, and that's, that's another topic that we'll get to eventually is, is whether or not that's working, but. Um, if you split the responsibility between the government center, judicial center. And you're going to have some satellite buildings that are going to be picked up by the square footage rules, you know, everybody gets half a, half a million square foot, right? Um, and then you have Mark and dealing with just the capital projects and the capital program. Which Mark and I've talked about, how do you go about dealing with the program and project initiation? How does something get into the program as opposed to what's in the program now? Um, and then under the office manager, their current accounts payable, payroll coordination. They do have a person that works with uh custodial and grounds and then uh the mailroom staff. But if you look over to the right, I put a little table in there, show you kind of the salary ranges. These are just averages, they're not hard numbers that everybody, but this is kind of the, the point where. Um, we think people should be. I think the maintenance techs, you know, probably uh. Somewhere in that, you know, fifty-five to sixty-five thousand is probably uh. What we would look at, you know, the maintenance engineer at eighty is if you're getting somebody that has certifications, qualifications. To manage boilers and HVAC systems, chillers and, and things like that. Um, these are skilled trades, they're, they're able to find that type of employment in school districts and other cities, uh public works departments. So you're not going to get those people if you can't get to that type of compensation. Um, and these are just simply the averages. But this is the org chart in comparison to what you saw earlier and this would have the, the people that were. Um, proposing and the headcount would go from twenty-five to twenty-eight at this point. So it's a, another uh director of maintenance and then uh the office manager and a tech. And that would give them five techs, you know, and an engineer for each. Organizational area. Plus the director himself, so it's seven plus two custodians, yes.
Um, Drew Fraz, Drew Fraz speaking. So Roger, um, that looks great to me. Uh, I, on the chart, I don't see uh administrative assistant. The, the current one is on family leave.
Yes.
So are we going on the assumption she's?
She's in these here.
You'd be in there.
Yeah, she's in those right now. Right now, I mean, really, accounts payable and payroll coordinator is all one person. And that's where we're struggling and Charles has people in our office, hey, can we help you get all this done now? We want to get it done. Get all the paperwork, get it put together, but that's where, again, if you wanted to kind of create a group of people that would share the responsibilities, I think. It would be. It would be a really good strategy going forward. Um, I, I would even. You know, we, I've talked to Joe Onzick and finance about this as well, you know, there's a lot to be said about those people being coordinated with finance. And, and we have our people work very closely with finance and I think that would continue. But that might be a discussion down the road is, you know. How do you handle payroll and how do you handle accounts payable? And how do you, how do you create some type of control between the person monitoring, managing the work in the field and the person that pays the bill? That receives the product, that marks it in inventory. Puts it in the asset list. When it gets removed, they dispose of it, take it off the asset list. A lot of those things are processes that need to be in place, but the county does them, you know, in, in different ways and every department you, you come across. And I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but you know, you, you, once you start to coordinate these people underneath a, a. Finance or underneath a certain structured way, they start getting done, uh, you know, a way that you can understand them and backtrace it. So we do like uh requisition, order, quotes, all the work that you need for procurement process, we kind of do the full circle. You'll be surprised to know that some people just take an invoice and submit it for payment.
I, I just, I, what I was alluding to and I, some of this could be discussed in executive session, but uh. You know, our, our administrative assistant went on family leave, kind of with an open-ended. Open-ended date with a, I mean, you know, and I, I've, I've heard comments that maybe not coming back, so.
End of April is what this scheduled time is, but that, that, you know, if they still have challenges, you know, or whatever, that we don't, we don't have a.
Obviously with Mill Creek, you know, she was. The two people that I dealt with on Mill Creek are three people, two are gone, you know, so it's, it's been really tough, you know, so we're operating.
So we, we have, we have uh also for Mill Creek, we, we, we don't have Mill Creek mentioned in here, Mill Creek's another person on there, but that's a separate fund and a separate. Uh, issue, so.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah. Um, just to make sure I understand the, the, the outcome of the two charts. The existing chart shows that we have thirty-one employees, the new one shows twenty-eight.
Yes, sir.
And, and, and.
So you have to deduct from thirty-one, you have to deduct the six people that the sheriff took. You're down to twenty-five and then we added three.
Okay.
You're at twenty-eight.
And this, and these both presumed full hires.
Yes.
Okay.
And potentially the office manager, if we share the salary, that would be a split.
Okay.
But we do that on, on the payroll side.
This, then that was my other question, that, does this not show the split of the office manager?
No, it does not right now.
Okay.
It's fully loaded, they would have their own person managing all of that and.
Split between IT and.
We, we would probably propose it that way at the, at the point where we're asking a board authorization. To allow the position and the salary and the budget adjustment, we would ask for the split.
Mr. Sheprow?
Uh, question at first, so first is. Um, how much of this, Roger, do you think would require? Board approval to implement as far as an internal reorganization?
So we would have the organizational chart and the three positions and job descriptions.
And would they, is the function that you've described as sort of the office manager having. More involvement with the procurement process itself? Would that be fit into one of these boxes that's there or would that be?
It would fit under the office manager. It would be the office manager.
It'd be another, but it'd be sort of a separate description.
Yes.
Contract or procurement oversight.
Yeah, they'd be responsible for accounts payable, they'd be responsible for uh payroll, they'd be responsible for the contracts for custodial and grounds. Um, we're talking about the mailroom where that fits, I don't know if it fits underneath where it's at now, we might move that entirely, but the, it, it's. It's one of those offices that it functions. it's one of those offices that it functions. People are relatively happy with what happens with that. So it's like a, that's a low hanging fruit, but.
Give that to the office manager. So.
Yeah, so.
He or she starts off with a.
Yeah. But yes, that, so the office manager, the, the other thing is that that person would have kind of a dotted relationship to the maintenance directors and to capital projects. So they would be using that function for doing the bids and RFPs. And, you know, so you have a person who's in the field, they're trying to fix a plumbing issue. Right now, I, I mean, they escalate up through their management chain as opposed to a person who has all the contracts in hand, has all the contacts in hand and has the, the formal understanding of what you can and can't do. You know, and, and you got a person in the field who's making a field decision and obligating you to do something. And you're, they, they are incredibly reluctant to say, yeah, just do it because they don't want to get in trouble.
I mean, I, I've heard from a number of people, Shepperle again, that this notion of the, what are the architects actually doing? What is the scope of their authority?
Yes.
And I think at least in one instance, the architect is also the designated owner's representative, which has legal
Yes.
impact that my sense goes but, you know, beyond what the board thought they were doing when they authorized that.
And we've been asked to look at that as we go forward with the program and how that works to make sure that, you know, there's not a conflict of interest between the, the project that was approved and the owner representation that is approving essentially the pay apps and saying, yes, pay the vendor because it's done satisfactory to the county. I think that would be in large part like a pre-approval process with the office manager. And then ultimately the executive director or either capital projects director or the director of maintenance would also approve. And we would, we would take that responsibility in-house. And ultimately, if you had an owner rep that you're consulting with, it might not be the owner rep. It might be just a owner consultation type of relationship. And ultimately the owner rep never leaves the county. It's our responsibility to approve of it before it's done. And I think that that was kind of conveyed in the multipurpose building project is, is, you know, where did something, you know, where do we lose sight of a particular change order? And the owner rep approved of it and boy gee, we wish we would have actually known or had more carnal knowledge of that particular change. I think that's the fair way to say it. So.
When you're doing, and you talked about a circular like procurement, you, you have like the person that procures it is not the same person that receives it. So there's always a double, you have a double check.
Yes, we, Charles has been working on that. Actually, it's one of the controls that we've been trying to make sure we implement. So we have requisitioners. So you requisition or ask for something. Then it goes to basically either procurement or a buyer. And then we get quotes, we, we follow the county financial policies as best we can. You have to get three quotes for anything between 10,000 and $30,000 and anything over 30,000, you do an RFP or a bid. So if it's under $10,000, we still get quotes usually just to make sure we're getting, you know, fair pricing. But those quotes would turn into a requisition, which would get converted by purchasing into a PO. And then that PO would be either sent out to the vendor or we would, you know, deliver it through email to the vendor depending on how, how we're working with them. And then when the items come in or we receive them or we are in receipt of the services, project's done. We go into the finance system, market received, it goes into accounts payable batch, gets processed for payment, check goes out, ACH. You have a full circle of everything that was done to it, you can track it back, track it forward. And it, it's nice because everything's in the system. And when they do the external audit or finances, trying to find something, they can tell exactly what you, what you did, what, what did you pay? The invoices are all attached. We can, we could do a kind of a show and tell sometime about the finance system. If you'd like, I think you'd find it fascinating to see what goes into it.
More meetings. Great.
Well, I was about to suggest that maybe a presentation about how the procurement, existing procurement ordinance or doesn't work. And I think the flowchart that you described would be.
Yeah. So, so when we, and I, I can tell you, I don't know that that's actually documented anywhere, the way we do it. Charles and I have our way of, our, like our procedural way, but I don't know that finance is saying, you must do these things in the system. They have rules about how much you can buy and what requires quotes, what requires bids. But they don't tell you, you must do this, you must do this, you know, it, it's for, for me, when I started at the county, we were on a different finance system. And, and I'll be honest with you, I was kind of devastated when I started here because we had all this stuff was internalized to the IT department. In, in the federal world where I worked, Department of Energy, you, you had a requisition, you handed it off to a buyer, you never saw it for 90 days. You just told them, this is the description of everything that I want. And then federal buyer takes off with it and you get the results later. You may get it in 90 days or whatever. They'll send you a note when they process the order. Here it's, you own it all the way up to, comes in the door. So you have to create functional units in your office to do that.
And I guess when I was getting it, you have cross checks to make sure that the, the people that are ordering it.
Yes, and inventory.
Slippage in there somewhere.
So we've, we've managed inventory of all the computer assets and tagged them for, I don't know, a decade or so, more than that, probably two decades I've been here. But that's a way to track the assets, not only on the way in, but on the way out. So we can tell you where, like if we bought, I mean, we buy computer equipment that is tens of thousands of dollars and in six or eight years it's worthless. So we have to explain, where did that asset go? And when we have a recycling contract with the local vendor and they maintain an asset list of what we send them. And we maintain a list of what we dispose of. If anybody asks us, we'll share the lists. So.
Really long memories. All of what's being described here used to be under something that was called the Department of Central Services,
Central Services.
Which did everything from, you know, steal office furniture from one place and put it in your office or, and then we did the procurement ordinance. And I think a lot of what you're describing are sort of off ordinance ways of dealing with what was either too specific or too vague. And it managed to be both at the same time.
You know, like if you go over to the sheriff's office, they'll have an SOP document for everything they do in the office. Standard operating procedure, they, this is how you do this. And I think some of those things, you know, you, you're, I don't know if you need to go that far, but you need some, you know, standard ways of processing certain things.
You need job descriptions and everything else.
Yes, we have job descriptions. We do that internally in I, in IT. And I, I, I don't know if there's a formal job description that HR is kind of completed, but they, they accept job descriptions from a variety of offices and departments as opposed to a position control, which I know Jamie Labrillo and, and HR is looking at. But you know, it's like, okay, well, how do you define a position and, and what's the title? What's the range? Is there a low, medium, high? Is there a step grade, you know, system? And there's, there's a lot of kind of generality in there that it's just not defined. So you create your way of doing it and trying to follow the ordinances and statutes. And, and ultimately everything that we do that's over $30,000 goes to the state's attorney's office. And so we get civil contract vetting for everything basically that's over 30,000, anything that goes to the board.
Are you stamp to do that?
So. So, you know, going beyond that, we, and we can, you know, I, I would like to get your direction on whether or not you want us to prepare resolutions and an org chart and the descriptions for those three positions and the recommendation of the reorganization. That's a consensus thing. You're not voting on it today, but if that's the direction you want, we bring those into admin committee next time around. Then it would go to finance to deal with the budget.
I think we need, Berman here, I think we need all that to, to really, to really look at it in depth. I like what you're proposing. Obviously there's justification for, for everything out there, but I think we need that detail at that level to, to really evaluate it.
There's, there's a little bit more to the second and third steps that I'd like to talk about too, but yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Fraz?
Yeah, I support it. You know, I, I did work closely with that department on the, the new building as well as the Mill Creek issues and you know, we can brag about how we've frozen the tax levy for a decade. But at some point departments start to wither on the vine and this is one of them. And we cannot, you know, we, we gotta increase our budget. We gotta find that money, increase the budget for this department and increase the pay across the board. And it's been brutal being without our director and administrative assistant, especially at Mill Creek. But maybe there's a blessing in it that we're, you know, we got Roger in here looking at the bigger picture and the organizational and operation. So I, I support it 100%.
Mr. Martin?
I support it.
Okay, I concur. So there's four of us that are on the committee. Any comments from?
I just, I, I want to say that I think what Roger did saved us about $200,000 in hiring an outside consultant to come in and do the same thing. I think this is really a, a great piece of work.
You know, this is Roger and I, I want to, you know, Mark and Charles are here. They, they helped me with a lot of this work. They're, they're, you know, invaluable as far as working through these problems. And that's one of the things that I think has been a strong suit for IT is that we have a lot of really great people. They're really good thinkers. And so we, we do like to do our own kind of understanding of things and I think that helps. But if you, if you don't mind, I want to get on to the next part of this. Now, this is.
There's more? Great.
Yes, just so you don't, don't misunderstand, this is not representative data. This is for example. So when you talk about the maintenance of the buildings, it's typically broken into three categories, deferred maintenance, things that you haven't done that you should have done. Right? Preventative maintenance, which are scheduled lists of things that you do to the boilers, chillers, RTUs or rooftop units, and you have air handlers and all the different, you know, water systems, everything in the building that you need to do preventative maintenance. Here's a list of things. Do this every month. Do this every week. Do this every year. Reactive maintenance, hey, Roger, it's cold in here. Hey, the door's broke, the whatever, you know, you're dealing with reactive maintenance. So then the right is, you know, like, okay, if I were measuring that, would I say 50% of our workload is deferred maintenance? Is it reactive? Is it preventative? Are you measuring it? What do you, what do you know about what you're using your time, people and money for? And what we find is that we don't know that right now. It, it's just an unknown. Nobody knows how much time is spent on anything. And nobody knows how much money is no, there's no real measurement of that. Let's just put it that way. It's, it's very loosely understood is we're spending money and trying to get things done. But I think that's important. So when you look at preventative maintenance, I just kind of ran through these, but I think the, you know, the schedule of routine preventative maintenance, there are some areas where they have preventative maintenance routines, other areas where they don't, other areas where, you know, maybe it's not executed and documented adequately. You know, is there an assessment of the routine? And when, when they do it, is there anybody there that does the QC on the preventative maintenance to say, I'm going to go by and check the maintenance tech's work to make sure everything was done. And then, you know, you countersign it and we were joking about it. Okay. Well, if you go to a fast food restaurant, you look at the back of the bathroom door, they got a checklist of everything that was done to the bathroom and the guy signs it. Okay, that's oversimplifying it maybe, but we, you know, we need to have preventative maintenance. So how do you measure that? Well, it's, it's successful completion and verification of the maintenance schedule. So somebody who's the, you know, director of maintenance or the supervisor goes around and says, I'm going to go check on building C. I'm going to go check and make sure all the maintenance was done according to the schedule. When I get done, I'll sign off on it and verify that it was done. All happy, 100% maintenance scheduled, 100% maintenance completed. Okay, I didn't get to the filters on the, you know, furnace or whatever. Okay. Oh, 100% maintenance scheduled, 80% was complete. We missed 20%. We measured it. We know we're 20% off or we know we didn't get it done. Those types of things, you know, I think are, are essential to understand whether or not you're, you're doing your preventative maintenance or not. And, and if you're falling short, where, where did you not do it? And if you're not keeping track of it adequately, you can probably expect mechanical failure. Just a matter of time.
Do you have a work order system in place?
So they have a system called Facility Dude. It's basically something that was kind of born out of managing school buildings. And I believe at one time, what do they call it? School dude? School dude was dude, D U D E. And so they have Facility Dude and they do have the ability to, to load maintenance schedules into that. And I talked to a couple of the guys, they do use it for certain systems. They have some of them programmed into he dude. I talked to a facility dude about this and a couple of other vendors. And there are people that will do the maintenance schedules for every type of major mechanical that you want. And they'll put it into Facility Dude for you for a price, or you can do it yourself. But there's like, we had a quote for the judicial center to take all of their systems and put them into Facility Dude for maintenance schedules to have them do it was 20 some thousand dollars. They'll look at everything, assess it, put the maintenance schedules all in. You can do it yourself. If you think you have the competencies and the skills to do it, you can put it in the system yourself. So there's kind of a mixed, mixed mode. The other side of that is that, and we'll get to that is the reactive side of it is if you have a request, a maintenance request, Facility Dude also tracks that. So there's preventative, they track the scheduled maintenance, reactive stuff, help desk, service desk type of maintenance, they track that.
They put in their time on each, what it takes to do each of those apples, each of those positions. Okay. That's, you know, the data that you really need is, costs money to get.
So, yeah, so we'll go, we'll go to, from preventative maintenance to deferred, which is obviously things that were written up in a 2015 plan. There's a 2015 plan. It was a 10-year plan. It's wrapping up in 2025 and there's tons of stuff on that plan. It's probably 600 pages long. We're not going through that today. In that plan, there are lots of things that were scheduled in deferred maintenance that I, I'm trying to, Charles and I are, we're going to read through the plan. We got it printed in binders. It's coming out. We're going to go through the plan and the plan's still within range of two years. It, it still has items in there that probably were on the list that should have been dealt with. So one of the things I'm looking at is in that current plan, are there, can we itemize and tell you what wasn't done in it? Because if it wasn't done, it's still on the, it's still on the list of things to do and it's probably the oldest. And, and we're also conveniently getting ready for next year's budget. So how much of that that was deferred and then deferred again, can we add to the budget for 2023? Where can we? And, you know, if we get some money through ARP, maybe that could help us offset some of that, you know, list, long list of deferred, deferred, right? Not to say use a double negative. But White's also doing an assessment, same thing. White's looking at what we have in deferred maintenance as well. And they're going to take that report and update it. So we'll get another, you know, 10-year type of look at it. That goes back to that presentation we did at committee of the whole, which was, you know, you had $18 million in deferred maintenance eight years ago. It probably didn't get much better. So how do you measure completeness? You know, you assess the condition annually. You compare to your scheduled deferred maintenance replacements. And you measure whether or not you completed everything that was on your schedule. And if you're not following it or you're deviating from it, why? You know, that's, that's a good measurement, I think, for the deferred maintenance.
Is, is there a, is there any? You think anybody's at zero deferred maintenance or what's, is there an industry average? I'd just be.
You know, I doubt it.
But 50% is really high.
Yeah, I, I doubt that there's anybody that's like perfect, you know, acing that score other than new buildings. You know, and that's a good question is, is, you know, within our pain threshold, you know, prioritizing what's most important. And, you know, okay, when you talk about a project and we'll talk about project initiation in a minute, what makes it a project or a part of the program? Is it because it's public safety? Is it because it's accessibility issue? Is it mandated by the courts or by law? Or, or does somebody just want it? You know, so, so we have, we have to determine what makes it a part of the capital program for Mark to work on. You know, and, and that's something that's not a discretionary thing for us. It's the board decided on a capital program. And we need to make sure that it's, you know, adopted and authorized as a part of that program. If you don't, then, you know, how did you decide to, to do that? And what, what was the justification, you know, behind it to, to get it initiated? So, but measuring completion.
Mr. Martin, did you have a question?
I do. So I want to make sure I'm correct again. In 2015, in 2015, we determined we had $18 million with the deferred maintenance.
Yes.
And we have a significant amount of that list that yet remains to be completed.
Yes, it's on, it's kind of unknown because I don't think they followed the plan.
And then am I correct that we've not looked at that issue since 2015?
Not the overall plan. I do know that for a period of about three or four years, that plan. Not the overall plan. I do know that for a period of about three or four years, that plan was followed, and we spent a lot of money working towards remediating deferred.
Well, my point being, in addition to whatever the significant element of the 18 million is, we're gonna have a brand new batch. That became deferred maintenance items.
Yes.
In the inner of.
Of everything.
Okay.
And and I do, I do think it'll be more than 18, but, you know, then you gotta prioritize it. Like I said, what's what's safety, what's required?
And comment question?
Yeah, well, this sort of sheperd, I guess this follows all what Mr. Martin just said. My limited knowledge of the way you keep record, financial records, is you have a chart that's aging of your accounts receivable. And I remember my old law firm, they never wanted to write anything off because the people who generated the business didn't like it. So you'd have, you know, $10 million of. 360 days and over receivables you are never gonna get, but they didn't want to write it off. So I guess to his, Mr. Martin's point. We don't know really how much of that 18 million is is is, I guess, what, seven years old? And and if it is, how much it's grown by, because if you defer it, sometimes it gets worse. That would, yeah, I mean, that would seem to me. And then the other point is that within might be seven years old, but something that's two years old. Might be more important. And, yeah, it seems almost astonishing and crippling that you, we don't have that information.
You know, I I think to support the buildings, major mechanical, and and Charles and I were talking about this the other day is. Do you set an artificial threshold and say any major mechanical over $30,000, you know, is a critical system? And and you need to have the, you know, the PM's done, everything done by somebody qualified to do it, and you have to have it on a depreciation schedule or a lifecycle. You just, you have to have that. Now, stuff that's under $30,000, you could probably deal with it, you know, on a year to year basis, but those big major mechanicals. When you, when you come in and say, hey, I need $600,000 for this, that's a, that's a big chunk.
Is White Company working on this issue?
Yes.
And we think by next month, they'll actually have.
They were supposed to be in in April, and it was, our meeting coincided with someone's vacation. And we were told they will be here in May. I told them they have to be here in May. And in fact. White is meeting with us this afternoon. So they're gonna go through this with us this afternoon.
I just have this idea that there's gonna be sticker shack.
I.
When that's presented.
No argument there.
Yeah, and the good thing is that it, once you prioritize it and you schedule it out, the the goal would be to make it kind of a an even ride. As opposed to the peaks and valleys of the, you know, and that's what we've done, I think, successfully, Charles and myself done over the years with IT. You know, try not to bring in every year, you know, hey, we need $2 million next year. We don't need anything. You know, it's how do you schedule it over time to make it, you know, more palatable? So measuring the priorities, you know, and the completion of the deferred maintenance is is really important. That's part two. Last part is reactive. And, you know. Mr. Burman, you mentioned, you know, how do you keep track of stuff? They they do have Facility Dude. They receive requests. You know, messaging is is phone calls and emails, and I pass you in the hall. And then the question is, you know, how do you respond? And are you consistent and timely? And and how do you follow up? And how do you communicate what's happening with an issue? And, you know, there's really no. What I would consider to be like a processor procedure, or even a well-defined way of somebody submitting, you know, requests. We had an issue this morning with a request, and, you know, the question was, do I put it in Facility Dude, or do I just call somebody, or who do I? So Charles and I were talking about restructuring and defining, this is the procedure that you use to put something in the help desk. And this is what we expect you to receive on the other side as it comes out of the help desk. So there's any, any system has a series of inputs and outputs, and there's a process that goes with those. So on the input side, how do you process a request coming in? And the output side is, who addresses the request? What timely manner, communication? What is the process fixing the request and closing it? It cannot simply be, I passed somebody in the hallway, told them that they need to fix this, and then later I call them, later I send them an email, later I, you know. And eventually, it's, okay, well, when, when did it get closed? When did it start? I don't have a measurement of any of that. So. You know, measuring it, we we do a lot of aging reports, which are, how how old is the ticket? Has it, has the request been out there for two days, a week? On Fridays, we get reports on the aging to know what IT stuff is lingering and has age to it. We also look at, you know, how long has it taken to close it? Issue, frequency, volume. So if I, if I have an incident that happens every week, you know, on Friday. And it's happened for the last four months, nobody's fixed it. They close the ticket and move on to the next thing, but it's not actually being fixed. So tracking the requests, walking through the process of managing the request, then ultimately trying to look at the data to say. You know, somebody has restarted that piece of equipment, you know, 10 times. It's not fixed. It, you know, you're you're just treating the symptom. So having a better maintenance. Plan in place and a better service desk probably starts with simply just some procedural things on that input output side. What we want coming in from the customers, what what they should expect us to do when we deal with their problem. And then the output is, you know, reports about the frequency, the volume, the, you know, aging of of tickets. And, you know, every year, how many tickets did you, how many tickets reactively did you deal with? Hopefully, it should go down. If it goes up, you're just got stuff failing and other problems going on, but are you, you know, do you even know where you were at a year ago? You know where you're at a month ago. Another thing that you can look at is, if if something's causing you problems and you fix it. You should not see the indicative help desk request related to that problem anymore. It should go away. So sometimes you look at the help desk and say, you know, in in a software world, that particular software or that particular hardware is causing us problems every month. And we have 2,000 of those. It's probably gonna get worse. If that's failing on us, or it's causing us this problem, it's probably not just that one person. It's gonna be everybody eventually. So we need to start looking at, how do you fix it, you know, more systemically versus the, you know, kind of the individual case? So you can, you can learn, you can do some data analysis of what is happening. And you say, well, I got all the same rooftop units, and one of them just crashed. It's it's done. We need to replace it. Well, you got seven other ones just like it, same age. You know, that's not hard science. It's data about your equipment.
Kind of like your family car when it has to go into the shop once a month.
Yeah.
It's telling you something.
Having seven cars and trying to keep.
Yeah, if you had a fleet, fleet of cars, and they're all the same model, and that one of them exhibits, you know, a problem with the transmission.
And it all comes down with understanding.
Yeah.
Your organization, what you have in it.
Yeah.
And the process.
So anyway, you know, reactive maintenance. So we talked about, you know, deferred maintenance. We talked about the reactive maintenance. You know, and and also dealing with scheduled preventative maintenance. All those are things that need to be measured. Right? And that gets back to having some way of evaluating whether or not you're doing this right. What's your percentage of effort? In these areas. And we we want to get out of the deferred maintenance business. We want to get into the preventative and and deal with the reactive, but most of our work should be preventative. We should be maintaining the stuff that you buy, and hopefully getting all the useful life out of it we can. And dealing with our customers that have, you know, needs as well, but the deferred maintenance is something that we need to schedule it out. If it's five to 10 years of scheduled deferred maintenance, getting it caught up. I think the ARP money would be a good start on that. We did ask for $7 million in the ARP request for internal. And a lot of that, I think, would go into fixing major mechanical systems related to deferred maintenance. It's not building new buildings yet. So if we go back to where we left off, we're gonna talk about capital. Personnel, we talked about, you know, the different types of maintenance, dealing with capital. Right now, on the left hand side, is what we have identified as priorities. So you have the master plan and the assessment. Those are being done right now by White. Master plan is related to the use of the buildings and the square footage, condition of the buildings. All that considered, what do we have? What do we use? And, you know, what would we project or see us needing? This is long-term vision, you know, 10, 20 years beyond. Assessment of the buildings, major mechanical, are they in good repair? Do they need repair? What kind of repair? Order of magnitude? When do you schedule it over the next 10 years? There are two electrical problem projects, JC Electrical, and the OCH is the Old Courthouse or Third Street Courthouse. There's parking and sidewalk repairs budgeted, and then the last item is demolition projects. So when we talk about program, the items on the right is what Charles extracted from the budget worksheet or the budget entry. That was what was entered for capital projects. When I look at this, that's the capital program. That's what the county board approved as part of the capital program. You have some things in there that are kind of general, architectural programming and engineering. My understanding of that is that architectural programming and engineering is specific to the program. It could be interpreted that it's any architectural programming and engineering that's needed by the county. The contracts are written that way. The contracts don't specifically call out that you can only do things that are in this list. The contract is they'll do architect engineering and and construction management. What we would contend is that that $800,000 is to manage the architect engineering and management of the list of projects. If it's not in the list of projects, the architect and engineering shouldn't be working on it. So we would bring that back to initiate through the committee process. The other one that's kind of generic, which is in there, which is was called into question. Is about the fourth item down. It says contingency. So in our capital budget, there's a $750,000 quote contingency. To me, that's contingency for the capital program. It's not to pick up new projects that are in the capital program. So we're looking for consensus on that as well, that contingency is for the capital program. If we have a capital program project that runs over, so Coroner Demo, the demolition of the building back here is $250,000. If that costs $300,000 within capital, we have a contingency for that. We can pay the $300,000. If somebody says, well, we want to knock the building down and build another building there, building a new, you know, building back there is not in the program. So we wouldn't use contingency money to build another building. We would simply use it for one of the program items. Is that, I I that's the consent or kind of the consensus that I want is is to know.
That a new, is that is, is that a defined?
Well, I can tell you that there are projects that come up throughout the year that nobody thought of a year ago.
Yeah.
And they're not in the budget. So how do they get into the program? We're gonna talk about initiation of a project in a minute. But if it's not in the program, my belief or understanding is that it should be added to the program. Or or denied, maybe, you know, but it's not go do architect engineering and tens of thousands of dollars worth of planning to bring it in and say, hey, do you wanna? You want to build the building now? So the, a good example of this is. The multipurpose room and courtroom build out that the chief judge, Clint Hall, asked about. He brought that to Charles and I. We were talking about it. We're like, you know, it's not in the program for this year. We don't have a budget for it. And he was asking about, well, we need to get the architects and people designing the room so we can get it done in time. And I told him, go, well, we need to be expeditious and get that in front of the committee structure to get it approved. I don't want to do. 50, $60,000 worth of architect work and not tell them about the the full sandwich, right? The $800,000 part. Because once you do the $60,000, it's sunk architect costs. So we brought that in relatively expedited and took it to. Admin and judicial public safety. It's come into finance. It's a big pill. I mean, it's $800,000. Worth of construction. It's not in the program. How does that get in the program? How does that get initiated? That's the question. So we think it's committee process, and that contingency is not for that. The existing architectural money is not for that. You know, it has to be in that program for us to start on it.
Mr. Martin?
Well, I I I support the request. In my mind, if we don't do it, then we undermine ourselves. As we whittle away at a contingency, which you gotta presume was reasonably set in the first place. So we've got existing contractual obligations with a contingency set, and we're gonna chew up the contingency. To deal with new issues and and the new issues are gonna have their own contingency for which we have none, no money.
That's a big contingency, 800,000.
What's that, sir?
That's a big contingency.
It is.
I don't know if we have that.
So this is Roger again. The the other thing.
We wouldn't use it because it's, we would have to be already in the program, and we define where it was gonna get paid for. Then if it went over, then we'd use contingency.
Yes.
That's the definition. That's what you're asking for, I think.
Yes.
Correct. Mr. Sheperd?
I, this is maybe being repetitive. The more you use emergency affidavits or don't put into the program. The 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 program ceased to have any meaning. And that's why transportation has a long-term.
Yes.
Plan. And you don't just say, I think we'd want to build a tollway that's not scheduled for 10 or 15 years down the road. And as Roger said, most of these things require multiple steps and lots of money before you ever have the groundbreaking. And how do you do that if you don't have it as part of a systematic plan?
So for for the capital projects coming up for the next year, I want to look at the deferred maintenance schedule that was done in 2015, find out what was not done. That's one of our projects right now is go through that. And there were things that were scheduled for years, 2020, you know, three, four, five in that program. And there were things that were scheduled for the eight years prior or seven years prior. And and I'm just curious, what wasn't, what was in that already existing plan and never done? Because those would be probably high on the list of these, you know, to address. So.
Oh, I, you know, my approach to snow shoveling always is that's a high priority. And then if I wait long enough, it's, I don't need to do it anymore, but.
Sure.
That, yeah, I mean, in a way, it's, it's almost embarrassing to say.
That's when you move to Florida, huh?
Yeah, it's almost embarrassing to say, gee, I wonder what happened to the thing we said we needed to do in 2015.
Well, it broke, it broke down, and now we have to replace it.
As long as we have consensus about that, you know, the the next part is initiation, which this is simple. This is kind of a, just a description of how we see that process. It's just 10 steps. You know, I identify the need is what, why? Why do we need this? You know, determine the ownership and who's managing it, financial review and and responsibility, funding, capital or special. You know, how do we go about the procurement of it? Is it budgeted or unbudgeted? Committee and board approval? Where does that get assigned? Resolution, approve, architect, engineering and design.
A lot of these are things for another day, but.
These are all things.
They follow logically.
Yeah, this is what we would do for a capital project to get initiated. It would have to follow this. And then, you know, it would become a part of the program, and nobody would be surprised. I think that's a good.
I like, no surprises.
Yeah. And these are practical things that I think anybody, even if it's not me, anybody can, you know, work from this. We're not trying to build a a kingdom. We're just trying to give it some structure. So. You know, capital requests, these are some of the things that were not in the 2022 program. This is an example. Landscape and fence for the solar project. Everybody agreed that solar farm should go in at the Judicial Center. It's not in there. It's not in that list of projects. So we need to, that's an initiation, right? I need to initiate a $100,000 project with committee next month to add the fence and the trees.
The deferred maintenance is a huge unknown.
That's true. But you you have a a solar farm being put in with, I believe, there's state, federal money or whatever involved, and and there's some. Agreement that was put in place at some time that we would do that, but I I don't find it in the program. Maybe it was part of the contingency, but to me, I would initiate it. Through committee and say, I want $100,000 to do this based on these estimates or projections. And you would adopt that as part of the program. You don't need to take it to full county board necessarily, because the finance committee sees it as, well, if you take it out of contingency and you say you're restructuring the budget to make that a part of your existing dollars. They're okay with that, but if you want to add new dollars, you need to talk to finance. So if it's within your dollars, you're fine. If it's outside of your dollars, you need to go talk to finance committee and get a budget adjustment.
I think you sort of have a consensus already.
Yeah, I think so.
I have a question about this landscaping and fence.
Yes, sir.
Why would that not have been in the original contract? We needed both landscaping and.
Yes, I think, I think the agreement with the solar project was. Yes, I think, I think the agreement with the solar project was, you know, moving forward after or during the budget process. And there was needs are identified from the neighbors and other things about putting in landscape and fence. And I, I'm not privy to the exact conversation, but between, uh, the previous, you know, executive director and, and, uh, executive director Walnick, they were discussing putting in landscape and fence along the berm.
I mean, I know what.
Yeah.
I know.
It's just not in the budget, so.
Conversation was, but that was never part of a contract.
It, it, it's not, and it, and there was, uh, work done at one point in time by, I think, White did some landscape design on it. So it's already got, they've already, they already submitted bills for some of the landscape design. We told them, just wait until we do this.
Mr. Shepper?
Well, I was gonna say, I was one of the people at the time that complained that the contract seemed to be lacking a lot of essential elements.
Yeah.
And I think the, the decision or the representation was, is that if we didn't approve it right then, we would lose our place in line and we never get into the state program.
Yeah.
And the result was, we approved the contract, which, as I remember, we had a presentation of a landscape plan, but with a disclaimer that we don't know if this is really going to be the plan or not, but you wanted to see something. So here it is. And it, it's.
Sure.
So we fell victim to.
Well, I don't want to get too, uh, far in the weeds on any of this stuff, but that's just an example of it. I don't know if you have something you want to say, Mr. Ross?
I was just gonna say, we're on page 18 of 27.
Yeah, let's, let's, shall we keep moving on?
The rest of this is gonna go faster, I promise. So as long as nobody disagrees about initiating capital projects, we're gonna do it that way.
Do it, do it that way.
Do it that way.
So demolition projects, you had $425,000 budgeted for Fabian campus, the former sheriff's campus. There's the diagnostic center, building management, garage, salt shelter, fleet maintenance garage and fuel center, that does not include the metal, uh, storage buildings that are out there, nor does it include the tower uh, or any other structures. The government center campus, we had budgeted $250,000 for the coroner's office demolition for this year, that's in the capital program. Other structures on the Fabian campus that are in, you know, good to fair condition. There's also a berm bunker out there that's underground, which we haven't really gotten much direction on. And then the tower is under a two-year lease, but those are the buildings that are out there, other than the ones that are budgeted for destruction. So, you know, these, this is a map of what it looks like out there. And the, the ones we're talking about is this sheriff's maintenance garage and the, the fuel center is right here. So this, this piece, this building here, which used to be the diagnostic center, that's been repurposed three or four times. And then this salt area, which is a temporary salt dome, which was replaced in the, uh, multipurpose building. We have a new salt dome. So those are the, the ones that are, are budgeted on this campus, uh, Fabian campus for demolition. Just the sheriff's maintenance, salt dome, building management, uh, was in this building, still has some things in there. These storage buildings in the back, they're in good to fair condition. They're not in the budget for demolition. They'd probably be trivial to take down and for right now, they're just storage. If somebody wants to store something, we can use them. Um, you still have recycling down here, they're still on the campus. But these are the, the items on that campus. What I'd like to get is, they're in the program budget for demolition, we've never acted on them. I, you know, it, we would basically, uh, direct our team to get the proposals for the demolition of the fuel center and the sheriff's maintenance, salt and the building management building. And we bring those proposals back to administration committee as soon as they're available. But we would be taking that out for proposals, so we're looking for that right now.
Step forward to do those four.
Yep, we'll do the proposals and bring them in and. You go on demoing.
I, I, this is not a facetious suggestion, maybe it's not practical. I'd call the Geneva Fire Department and say, would you like to come out and do a training exercise?
We could.
Burn it down.
I think we're looking for the, whatever you decide is the best way to do it. You're not looking for.
Yeah, I mean, we need a proposal for doing the demolition. And whether we burn the building or not, I don't think the.
You're looking for a nod.
Care.
You're looking for a nod today to say, okay, finally, let's do this, let's do.
We want proposals to destroy those buildings.
Well, that's pretty simple, I think that from the board or from the committee, then we have a consensus that that's.
Yeah.
So the follow-up to that is we send notice.
The procurement office.
Yeah, we would send notice telling them that, that you need to be out of the buildings, get your materials, get your stuff out of the building. You know, we're getting proposals right now, the committee is gonna vote on it, and then we're going to do the demolition pending their approval of the contracts. But, you know, it might take us 120 days, maybe by fall, we'd have them all down.
I.
Mr. Frost?
I would just like to direct building management to vacate that building and move anything, anything of value into the new building. And.
Yep.
It's closed.
So that would be part of the notice, it would be vacate, get out of the building, we're scheduling the demolition, we're getting proposals. We schedule the demolition, it won't be waiting for you to pack your bags. So, yeah, I, I do want a direction on that. And the other one is.
You have that, then just officially you have direction to proceed with those.
Proposals.
And it's about time.
Yep. The other, other, other items, um, that were on there, uh, these are some notes about the recommended demolition. Their budgeted expenses, um, we'd work with purchasing and our existing architect engineers to get a plan for demolition done. We'll get the bid out and then, uh, obviously we have some environmental challenges we have to deal with. So we need, we do need architect engineering services for the, uh, environmentals, that's the underground tanks.
And that would be from one of our three?
Yep, it'd probably be White. White would be the first choice that we have, we're working with them.
Um, done.
Next one is, uh, going back actually, I wanted to get direction on, uh, we do have, and we can talk about this another day because I think it might require some more thought. There's the coroner's office back here, which is also scheduled for demolition. And we do have, uh, people in there using it for refrigerator, uh, storage, vaccines. And there's also some others, other items in there. But the question is, you know, is that a, is that a short-term issue or a long-term issue? We're having a meeting with OEM and the health department, uh, soon to discuss where they want to store P P E and where they want to store everything now that they're gonna be getting out of the mass vac site at, uh, Sam's Club. So the question is, where do we store all this stuff? They have about 3,000 square foot of storage that they need. And we're trying to identify where would we put all that? There's storage in the multipurpose building, there's storage in the sheriff's office, there's, you know, there's space in the coroner's office that's sitting there, the old coroner's office. Um, the direction when we set the budget up was to demo, demo, uh, do the demo on the, uh, coroner's building.
That was my understanding. Mr. Frost?
Yeah, on your demo.
Yes.
Schedule, the OEM building, that's not being demoed.
No, that, that building was not in the budget. It's in good condition.
It's in good condition.
Has heating and air conditioning.
That's a big old warehouse.
4,000 square feet.
Yeah.
Which would conveniently be big enough to score, store the P P E, but I don't know about, you know, mice and other things out there. We might have to look at how that.
That'd be my concern, Mr. Martin?
If we have no present planned use for the pad upon which the coroner's office is constructed, why wouldn't we just let it sit? And, and with the potential that maybe it has a purpose. And if it doesn't, we can take it down, but if, if the building is otherwise sound, why create a vacant?
I think the building, the building's been identified, you know, not as a good use for occupancy by the coroner and by others, but, you know.
Warehouse is different.
It, it's obviously a, a structure and it's, the, the other challenge that we have is that when, when they place the generator behind the building, it's right in the middle of the property. If you go back there, you'll see that the, the generator is kind of in the middle of the turn, nested in the middle of the building between the Sallyport and the building. And, uh, that presents an interesting challenge. If, if you wanted to convert that to another use, you have a, a large generator that sports 911 sitting in the middle of the plot. But that, that one, I think, needs some further.
The act as a buffer, then the building act as a buffer from the rest of the.
It, it is, and.
At least for the short term, it's being used.
It is being used, so I don't think we can demo. I mean, we could get a proposal for doing the demo, demolition, just to see what it costs. And then talk about it at admin.
Committee input, no?
I, I just think let it, my thought is let it sit.
Sit.
Ms. Ross?
I agree.
Okay.
Mr. Berman?
Just sit.
Yeah, it's fine. Okay. I understand, I thought we were gonna get rid of it as fast as we could, but because it was not inhabitable.
It's the symbolism, we'd like to see it crushed, but.
Okay, we're talking in metaphors then.
Yeah, I think, okay, we'll, we'll wait, we'll bring it back and maybe a month or two and talk about it again.
Investigating the other places for storage too, right? So.
Yep.
The important thing would be to.
Our recommendation was the diagnostic center, building management and garage, salt shelter, the fleet maintenance garage and fuel center. Is this what we recommended? We didn't recommend the corner yet.
That's all.
It's on our list.
Yep.
Um, safety systems and ADA walkthroughs, we've been talking about this, uh, Charles and I, we're looking at, um, potentially doing a walkthrough of the buildings for safety and ADA, just to get an idea of what's, you know, what's happening in the buildings. Um, that was mentioned to us by a couple of people in the courts. I don't think there's any action for that right now, but it is something that we think is important. Just somebody visually looking at everything. Um, janitorial, again, we just did another, uh, contract for janitorial. We've had a hard time, uh, keeping up with that as far as having enough people working and being responsive to it. That's all contracted out. And we have some custodial internal, but most of it contractually, uh, covering gaps. People not showing up, not fulfilling their, uh, contractual, uh, obligations. But I think, you know, we're, we're working with a new contractor, we have a couple on, on contract. But it's something that we need to evaluate a little bit further, we didn't get into that as much. Um, and I think it's still a lower priority than the general maintenance. And again, same thing for the mailroom. Generally, you know, people are happy, it's working. Um, you know, we've had some, some different, uh, you know, issues over the years, but not, again, not as important as the maintenance issues.
Not security, not security or safety.
No.
Yeah.
No. I guess the mail, vote by mail ballots, I don't want to talk about that, no. That's not my problem, that's not my problem. Yeah. They do come, uh, they do have a lot of mail coming through now with that, uh, as far as vote by mail, going out and coming in.
Be more, okay, all right.
You know, in summary, again, we're just looking at the staffing, the, uh, the, the kind of the big three of maintenance, how you deal with measuring, uh, that, looking at our assessment of the deferred maintenance, getting a better service desk, getting scheduled maintenance done. And then how do you initiate and deal with capital projects, which we talked about? Things that are not in the 2022 program and how do they get in there? You just told us direction on the demolition of buildings. And then for the safety and ADA part, we're gonna be kind of walking through them. This is just our look at it, just to see what we think.
Interesting to see a list of the different maintenance contracts.
Can do that. That pretty much, yeah, summarizes everything that we've looked at so far. And I'm not saying it's a, you know, a complete and final list, but it's, it's a lot. And I, I really appreciate, you know, listening and, and kind of going through the different, um, aspects of what we've seen so far. We will be looking at the janitorial and the grounds, landscape grounds, uh, snow removal, those types of things. They're a little seasonal, but those are out there. And we do think there's some work that needs to be done in that area as well. Uh, but we didn't get to it with this yet.
Okay.
That'll be another hour meeting, hour and a half.
No problem. It's not right now. Already had our hour and 45 minutes.
Yeah, we're.
Okay. So any questions or comments from the committee? Anybody, Mr. Shepherd, anything else?
Well, actually, one quick thing was is that when we had the special meeting to discuss the possible priorities for, uh, a potential referendum, Mr. Frost very eloquently outlined the issues related to the buildings. And I think this is an essential part of making that case. Uh, you know, I mean, if you don't know what to ask for in terms of bonds, if we were to go that direction, until we know the extent of the problems. And it turns out that we don't seem to know the extent of the problems.
Anybody else online? I see some board members still hanging in there with us.
Um, Mr. Chairman, this is Alan, I have a question.
Mrs. Alan?
Uh, one of the things that Roger talked about was doing walkthroughs and assessments, ADA general, uh, uh, safety and, and, and upkeep of the buildings. Aren't we paying White a whole bunch of money to do that for us right now? Um, I was under the impression that we had them uh, under contact to, uh, give us that kind of a report.
Uh, yeah, I think we're looking for a summary report from them. I think you're talking long-term just as a, a standard procedure.
I, I think the, the, the things that they're looking at, you know, are within a list of items that they check. We're looking at it for just visual inspection, so we understand. And we might even use their list as we go through just to verify. But, you know, one of the things that was brought to us by the judiciary is, you know, regular, you know, presence of people looking at what's going on in the buildings and identifying with a face who's looking at the, the buildings and identifying things that need to be addressed. And, I mean, we, we did a walkthrough, uh, Mark and I did with someone the other day. And just walking through, we identified two or three things that probably need to be addressed before we get the 80-degree temperature this weekend. So.
Does that answer the question, Ms. Allen?
Yeah, thanks for the explanation. I'm, I'm also remembering that, that, um, we had to rebuild, uh, in the, in the judicial center, the HVAC system, didn't we? And some of that had to do with, uh, using, um, Geneva water, but not treating the water. So various parts rusted and so on, is, can we get a hold of that kind of thing so that we don't have to replace a whole system all at once too quickly?
Um, I, I would tell you that we have been working, you know, to get basically recommendations on this, uh, put together, which is something we didn't get to yet in this conversation, but I think we can talk about it in the near future is, you know, the relationship that we have and how far we go with contractors to support the preventative maintenance versus, you know, a managed service to do the maintenance on certain major mechanical. And I think that's the direction we're gonna recommend is that certain major mechanical systems over a certain level of complexity or value need to have professional services by professional maintenance, uh, people that are certified on the equipment. And, you know, we have odds and ends of maintenance agreements. But I think we're gonna try to formalize that into a, the scheduled maintenance plans. And, and it could be that the contractors we have, given the right direction, would do all the preventative maintenance. And they do it on a schedule and we'd be happy. Or it could be that we want someone to look at managing the scheduled maintenance for certain buildings because they're just high-value assets.
A lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it was St. Charles water.
I think, yeah, it was St. Charles, I think.
Yeah.
I was just gonna ask, it doesn't seem to me that an architect is the right answer to every one of these things. It, either it's too expensive or they don't have the right expertise.
Sure. And, and we do have major mechanical, I mean, we, we use, uh, M S A and, and anchor mechanical and some other groups that come out, do maintenance. But they, they, a lot of times, they're not hired to come in and do a plan or a program for you. They're hired to, to do a certain specific job and then back out. And what we're looking at is, no, we want you to do like a, a three-year contract to maintain the boiler and chillers. And you do all the preventative maintenance on them. Because they're that high value.
Did that answer your question, Mrs. Allen?
Really appreciate your trying to wrap your arms around this, that's excellent, thank you.
I'm happy to. All right, is there any other questions on anything else here for Roger? Anybody online? Okay, then, um, I think we're, we're running out of quorum fast here, we're gonna use Mr. Shepper.
Yeah, I get to be a quorum.
He's in a quorum now all of a sudden, because Mr. Frost had to leave. Uh, was there anything under any of the other items you had here, information technology?
No, sir.
Uh, any new business? Old business? Uh, I'll entertain a motion, put the, uh.
Make a motion to adjourn.
No, put, I want to put this on file.
Okay, I'll ask unanimous consent to place the reports on file.
Okay, we have that, all right.
Then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And then no executive session, so then we will have, uh.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second by Berman.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Enjoy your.